Um. So I'd like to welcome those councillors and staff in the chamber as well as. Staff and councillors online. Uh, open the meeting at five thirty three. Um, I'd like to firstly acknowledge that tonight we're meeting on the traditional owners of the um, Bangor people and paying our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. Uh, we've got three items for discussion tonight, um, and with the first one being the civics, uh, building demolition. And we've got a PowerPoint presentation to word for it, so I'll get that up on the screen.
I'll share, I'm gonna share that.
Absolutely. Grant's gonna share his screen. Um, in introducing this subject, again for the benefit of the gallery, uh, that's here, tonight's a decision-making forum, uh, it's to provide an opportunity for councillors to discuss um, with the administration, a number of matters and to help inform our thinking, um. With the sense, with the subject of the civic building demolition, we are looking to bring a report through to the um, eighteen September council meeting. So today, tonight's discussion will help shape and inform uh, that report, um, that will be looking to bring back to council relatively soon. Um.
For your second, just making sure.
Building bringing it up. So, um, we have, um, put together a PowerPoint, and Caddy Jarab is going to largely talk, um, us through the PowerPoint. Uh, what it does is opens up, uh, the conversation on a number of different options, uh, for the demolition, um, of this site. It's something that I think all councillors have been, uh, I'm not gonna suggest waiting for, um, necessarily with great intent to the patient, uh, cause it is a, a challenging, uh, conversation, but for every challenge, the flip side is an opportunity. So, um, what happens on this site, um, in future would have quite a significant, um, contribution to the public value, uh, for our city. Uh, so we've now got the presentation up on the screen and I'll pin over to Caddy if you wanna take over from here. Caddy.
Uh, thanks, Justin. Uh, can everybody hear me? Just sort of fingers up, thumb up, that you can hear me okay?
It's not the greatest. Um, can we turn the volume up?
Up forward, I don't know. It's just not quite set up correctly tonight. I can't work out, I can't change the thing.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
We'll have to persevere as best we can.
Try and, try and speak up. Um, uh, thank you and, and yes, this is a, a, a complex um, working through and I think that, um, you know, the delivery of public value coming, uh, coming from the potential opportunities that exist, uh, is something that will need to be foremost on, uh, on council's mind. So, uh, Grant, if you could head to the next slide, please. Thank you. Okay, just, um, just a little bit of background information, um, and before I do that, this presentation is designed to get your input as we're going through, so we're hoping to get a bit of conversation happening, but from a background point of view, um, as you're all aware, demolition of the civic building must occur by July twenty twenty four, or costly repairs across the civic building are going to be required. Um, uh, presented in a council report in May were details as to, um, why that timeframe has been set. But that's on the basis of engineering advice to ensure that, um, the civic building remains a safe place in the uh, immediate future for staff to be occupying, uh, but also in terms of the civic buildings, uh, role as a site, um, in Forsyth Street and Darling Crescent, Darling Avenue. So, um, um, yeah, so demolition must occur by July twenty twenty four, or repairs need to be done to ensure that the building is safe. Once we move from the civic building, the potential for the empty building to detract from the city centre, trading precinct is pretty high. So we need to put in place strategies to ensure that the building doesn't become a derelict building uh, during the period of time between us leaving the site and, um, either, uh, redevelopment or demolition occurring. Um, demolition of the current civic building and the rebuilding on the existing site is one of the options that were re- recommended by Stalard Meek for council's long-term accommodation. So this is just some background information to keep in the back of your mind as we're working through, uh, this topic tonight. Um, another point is, is that council owns the land that the building is on and the land is not classified as community land. So we're not caught within the structures of the Local Government Act, uh, around community land requirements. Uh, but of course, we are, uh, uh, required to ensure that from a prudential point of view, our decision-making is appropriate. Um, and as you would all be very much aware, the civic building site is a real key opportunity for catalyst development in the city centre, um, from the smaller perspective, but also for Wayala as a whole, from a, a, a strategic perspective. So I'm going to pause there on, on my commentary. Um, what other background, um, pieces of information or other, other things that uh, you think go towards the requirement to do something on this site or, or for this site and with this site?
The councillors, any other matters that you'd like, so this is, um, background considerations in determining how we move forward with the site? Councillor.
Thank you, Caddy. Just a quick summary for my own benefit. So we're moving because it's dangerous to stay and, and cost exclusive to stay. So the lowest cost move is to Edward John Air High School. Site here, I'm, I'm not sure whether it's a muster or should it be demolished for safety and amenity. Um, in any case, I think it's a huge opportunity, as is, is mentioned, and that we look at a, the short-term cost-effective use of the land whilst considering a long-term development. Again, it's a huge opportunity for a catalyst for Main Street renewal. I just wanted to flag that a personal, uh, perspective would be uh, the main streets that I was aware of back when I was doing retail leasing at Laid was, the main streets have shifted away from the retail heart, like a supermarket, which is the drawcard, and more towards the boutique style. So something like a, a local heritage, history, cultural, creative arts precinct, um, I think would be, would be wonderful in a perfect world. So whatever would need to happen to start those credit justifying through the community and the main street community specifically. Um, and how we can give people a reason to, to come to the main street for that, um, under that vision. And then, like, when can we talk to the market? Are we talking to the market about what could be done on this site? That's me.
Right. Yep, thank you, councillor Boarder. They, uh, that last question that you've posed is absolutely, uh, part of this presentation tonight.
Yeah, and so very shortly we will, um, sort of delve into the options going forwards and none of those questions or comments that you, uh, raised will be picked up through, through that. Um, this is the first slide of probably about, um, nine, ten from memory, so.
Yep.
Um, if you're happy to keep moving forward, if it's just the initial, um, forward starters, if there was anything else. Um, if you wanted to raise at this point in time as to, um, the potential demolition of this building? Of yours, alright. Um, uh, if anyone online wants to contribute, so Mayor Stone, uh, councillor, no, sorry, you're here, uh, yours, you're on the line. Uh, councillor Inglis and the like, if, if any of you want to contribute, um, just, uh, raise your hand or put something in the chat line and we'll pick that up. Um, but if we can go to the next slide, please.
Thank you, Grant. So, um, we've identified three options in terms of the particular site. Um, an option of do nothing. Um, that's not really an option. Uh, but we'll, we'll go through each of these options in a little bit more detail in a couple of slides time. So the three options, do nothing. Uh, council itself demolishes prior to July twenty twenty four, demolishes the building and um, ensures that the site or the remaining site, uh, retains a, a, a degree of amenity. Fitting for it being in the centre of, of the, the city. Um, or third option, council considers the release of a prospectus, which would be a prospectus out to market to test the market as to the redevelopment or the development of the site inclusive of demolition or not. Uh, so they're the three options. Um, any thoughts on, are there any other options? Bearing in mind that those three options, we've got some more slides on, so I don't wanna go into, into detail about those three options. Is there an option that we've missed? No?
Uh, thank, thank you.
Thank you, Grant. Next slide. Okay, so this is the option of do nothing. Really, um, for all intents and purposes, it's not an option. Uh, we have a safety risk. Um, it must be made safe by July twenty twenty four. The ways to make it safe would be to spend significant monies on doing, uh, renovations and fixing the building or demolition. So, uh, doing nothing is not really an option. Council has previously resolved that it doesn't wish to spend the money on, uh, doing up the building because that's not a good use of public, uh, funds. Um, uh, I think, um, you know, that's all fairly straightforward. Um, probably move on to the next slide unless somebody has got any questions, um, or other thoughts on the do nothing option.
Uh, Caddy, Caddy.
Thank you. Okay, so the second option was for council to proceed to the demolition of the building. Um, council, uh, proceeding to demolition is an indicative cost of around five hundred to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that's just for demolition. That's not for, um, any improvements on the remaining site to do with the amenity, the vacant site post-demolition. So around five hundred to seven hundred and fifty thousand, and that indicative cost is now, um, over twelve months old, so, uh, likely to be higher than that. We're anticipating in the order of a million dollars.
Yeah.
Um, when we go out or, uh, considerations of demolition is that, uh, there will be salvage items, uh, salvageable items within the building. Uh, if you look around the council chamber there, there's, uh, quite some woodwork and, and decent doors. Uh, it's already been raised in terms of the mural, uh, the tiled mural on the front of the building at Darling Terrace. So, um, we will certainly be looking for that to be salvaged. Uh, there are a number of risk factors in terms of the demolition, um, uh, the security of the building, the security of the site uh, needs to be constantly maintained. Uh, we've got a, what we lovingly call, uh, the dungeon. Um, there is a basement and the basement, um, does have, uh, lots of records, um, and, uh, compactus and so on. Of course, all of the records will be relocated as part of the temporary move to the Edward John Air High School. But the basement does pose a risk in terms of once this building, once the building is demolished, what happens with the basement? Do we fill it? Do we tap it? Um, what's the treatment? Uh, and the other risk factor is timing. So as you know, from a, a safety point of view, we are looking for the building to either be made safe or demolished prior to July twenty twenty four. Uh, the timing issues is two or threefold. One is the timing of the actual demolition itself. Then there is the timing of the redevelopment of the site. Uh, we can't leave this site, um, which is in the centre of the city. It's a strategically important site. It could and should be a catalyst development site for the rest of the city. If that is left vacant, um, with very minor improvements on it or uh, worst-case scenario, a fence around it, that is not going to be good for the city. That's not going to be good in terms of, um, um, movement in the city and from the perspective of investment interaction. So timing is, is, there's a couple of, uh, scenarios with timing. The amenity of the vacant site post-demolition, um, as I've mentioned, best-case scenario without spending too much money on it, um, could be, uh, you know, some form of, uh, small park, um, uh, type sort of area. Uh, we do need to think about what happens with the basement and how we actually deal with that. Um, worst-case scenario, as I said, would be a fence around the site, uh, with the potential for screening. Uh, but that screening could be printed screening, which is, um, telling the history of the site and, and telling the history of the city. Um, suboptimal though, uh, to have fencing around the site, uh, not good. Um, and of course, we've had quite significant main street feedback, uh, over the last, uh, couple of months in terms of what's going to happen with that site. So it's important that we treat that site with, with, um, the due regard of its importance to the city of Wayala. I'm going to pause there. Um, what do you think are the pros and cons, um, of us moving to demolition and having it demolished by July twenty twenty four? And then second le- second question, what might be some of the options for the inevitable vacant site that will arise from that? And what sort of timing, um, do you think that vacant site should not be a vacant site within?
With that, there's two separate questions. So the first question is around, um, pros and cons or, um, concerns, considerations in terms of demolition. Um, and then we'll deal with the second question, which is what do we do with the site, uh, if we demolish it? So councillor Boarder, the, any other comments or concerns around the demolition aspect?
The comments just, it makes sense to demolish, I think, as soon as possible, so that it's not sitting at all idle. And then moving very quickly to what it's gonna be used for, to be determined. So her- heritage, um, items salvaging, as you mentioned, doing, maybe a bit of a stop take on what needs to be salvaged or could be salvaged from a heritage point of view. And then moving, yes, straight into as quickly as possible, what the future or temporary use will be until it's final. This is, is, um, agreed on.
Um, I'll go to the mayor and then councillor Simpson. Mayor Stone?
Thank you, CEO. Uh, demolition, it has to be done. There's no choice in the matter there, and the sooner, uh, we do that, the better. As far as what we do in the meantime there, I would imagine as soon as we move out, our priority will be to look at the future of that site, as you've already discussed. If that is the case, and there is a serious, uh, looking at rebuilding on the site, I would have thought we would want to minimise whatever we spend on the site and just expedite the rebuild so that we can tidy it up without spending too much money. But I'll be guided by other thoughts there. I would think we would want to act in the speediest way possible if we are going to go back to that site.
Mayor, councillor Simpson?
I was just gonna say about the, um, the basic part, the people who are, who are allocated to the demolition, they truly know what to do about certain divisions off the map, you're sure it can't be accessed by anyone. Bye, Siri. Bye, everything.
Uh, councillor Portcarl?
No, I echo my fellow councillors', um, views in terms of, um, having the demolition done as soon as possible. That makes sense, especially considering the state of the union. Um, what's been left for in the budget for the move and for demolition?
There's currently, uh, no funds in the budget, uh, for demolition. This will need to be, once we understand what the actual costs are, uh, come through, uh, to council for decision-making.
Um, any other thoughts about the, the basement? Um, I haven't put my mind to that until just recently, uh, with this presentation. Um. Within the basement, um, we've got quite significant, um, compactus facilities that are concreted in. Um, I'm assuming that the roof of the compactus is a concrete structure, but that's an assumption. So in terms of it being waterproof, if we remove the building from on top of the, um, the, um, the basement, whether for full and sense of purposes, it will be sealed in terms of water e- e- ingress. Um, obviously, when we get the demolition phase, we can test that, but, um, it's maybe left in situ with some sort of capping, um, and then once a decision is made about the future development site, then consideration can be dealt with, um, in terms of the, the basement, but um, if the basement has to come out, it's gonna be a pretty big hole in the ground, um, stated in the OIS. So any other thoughts or comments about the basement and whether we leave that there, don't leave it? I might repurpose it in the interim until we know what we're gonna do with the site.
As I said, whoever's developed, you're sure you're not gonna do with that, including throwing the whole of the concrete. So it's all, so I care. Of course, all the banks.
In your experience or around the table, like, is there, is there a use for it other than filling it in? I have a flip it one that I think is funny, that I could suggest that, um, in the efforts of keeping serious, is there any particular use that it could be used for?
An interim measure?
Yep, before it's final use, yeah.
Storage. Will be an interim use. Um, beyond that, I wouldn't be recommending probably too many other uses. Um.
Right.
Um, I certainly wouldn't be recommending filling it in because if someone, uh, be a council or someone else decides to develop this site, um, and you've got a great big pile of, pile of concrete under the grounds that you then decide you don't wanna be, you're gonna have to, the expense of removing it, so.
That was why we raised it, I think, was that it does need to be a consideration. If, you know, if you don't know exactly what's happening with the site when demolition occurs, the basement just becomes a little bit of a complicating factor. In tha- in that regard, I don't think you'd wanna necessarily fill it right then. Um. Uh, like you said, that, that would be conversations with the contractor who's doing the demolition as well, but it's just a factor that needs to be considered, I think, as part of that demolition. Whereas if he knew what you, exactly what was happening with it straight away, it would be a different matter.
So on that note, how does it look when it's, when the building's demolished? So everything above the ground level is taken away. Are we talking like a massive big swimming pool sort of style thing? Or is there a roof on it that you can walk on with a doorway with a staircase down that you can access it with? And other than that doorway, it can be made safe and secure and you could still do something else on top of the basement? Is that sort of?
How would you guess? Latch at the second, allow those two options. Uh, I think it would be largely a concrete surface that may need to be patched or capped to some extent to make sure that water doesn't get into it. Um, but it, it will then, like, if, if council just decided, just for the sake of being, um, yeah, extremists, if council decided to wanna put a rainforest on there as an interim measure, um, you'd be looking at planting a rainforest on top of a concrete structure, which doesn't make a lot of sense, so. Um, it will have some implications in terms of what the, uh, potential interim look of the site is. Um, uh, which is the second part of the question, but before going there, did you have another comment about the demolition or shall we?
Just curious how big is the area?
The overall size for this site is two thousand square metres, but I'm not sure the actual seller would not be that size. Um, the seller is only about third of.
That's maybe what we're on.
Uh, about third of the site or half the site, third?
Quarter, quarter, be my guess, yeah.
Yes, I'd be roughly in the order of five hundred square metres, um, for a total footprint of about two thousand square metres. Um, if there's no other questions or comments about the demolition and other things to consider, we'll go to the second part of that question, which is um, working on the assumption that we've demolished the building, um, and there's a period of time which could be, um, you would expect as an absolute minimum, you know, twelve months, maybe a couple of years, depending on how quickly, um, a future development happens on this site. Have you got any initial comments or views about, um, what we should do with the site in that interim status? Um, councillor Boarder?
Just quickly mentioned, Tommy's mentioned, uh, obviously another comment about the demolish.
Yeah, thank you. That must have come in after I've last looked. So councillor, um, Pym has confirmed that demolition should occur as soon as possible. Um, looking to minimise the money that we spend making the site safe in the first instance. Um, and that options could be for a city centre, um, sculpture, um, central apartment accommodation, which is looking at a future development opportunity, which we'll, we'll come to shortly. Um, so in terms of an interim, so think vacant sites. Is there any views about, um, at this point in time, what that sh- site should look like as a vacant, empty site for a period of time? Councillor Boarder?
I have two ideas. One is beach volleyball. Uh, not, I'm not trying to be silly, but like, just something that's relatively easy to move. Um, plant the boxes to add some amenity to it. And then, I just, this thought I popped into my head, can we project onto any remaining wall? It was an old cinema site. Is there any nostalgia for an interim period to, I don't know how basic the setup would be, to make it safe and have a food van and have, like we projected onto the side of the ship. Something like that, an old cinema site. For six months or two years, how long it takes for someone to want to use it, to have it as a summer, um, like they do with the Hampton Gardens in Natalie. You know, under the moonlight, have a projection of a movie.
Yep. Other comments, thoughts?
It's a name, could be a recreation area, that's what I can put it down to. We've got, we need development. Obviously, we need development further up too. We've got three empty carriages. Four empty carriages, never been taken up by anybody. We might have to say in my ear, so it should be guys' recreation area.
Um, Mayor Stone?
Uh, it may be that we just have to wait until it's demolished and we actually see the site. I'm struggling to get it in my mind what it's going to look like. Uh, with the dungeon having to be filled in or capped. I'm just wondering whether we have to demolish it, then see the site and then come up with an in- interim, uh, use for it, uh, along the lines of what's being talked about.
Okay, thank you. Last call. Any last questions or comments or suggestions about the vacant site before we move on? All right, all right, we'll move to the next slide, please, Grant. Back to you, Caddy.
Yep, thank you, Justin. Thank you, Grant. Um, so the third option, uh, that we have been thinking around and want to have a conversation with you about is the potential issue of a prospectus out to the market to test the market for investment potential for the site. And this option is around, uh, testing the investment potential and it may include demolition or it may not include demolition. It will depend on, on what the proposals are that would come in. So a profess- a, a prospectus would test the market for investment potential. Uh, it would, um, we would be looking for it to act as a catalyst development. Uh, it would attract investments, uh, investors or partners or a purchaser or any other combination of, of, uh, investment. It's a promotional opportunity for Wayala, um, and also for the city centre. And it might be that such a profess- a prospectus could go to multiple sites. So we've got, um, uh, the current civic building site. Um, but there may well be, uh, another site in the city that could be joined into this. So there might be alternate sites as well that, uh, could be included in the prospectus. Um, uh, we would need to balance what it is that we would do in a prospectus so that we're not biting off more than we can chew, but we should be taking the opportunity when we possibly can. Um, I'll go to the next slide now in terms of what might a prospectus be. And I, I wanna say at, uh, before going into this in too much detail, that this, um, discussion crosses over a little bit, uh, the discussion that council needs to have in terms of what's council's long-term accommodation needs. And so we're temporarily moving to the Edward John Air High School site. You'll recall that, uh, Stalard Meek, when they did the study into accommodation options, there were four options that they considered. One was, um, rebuilding on the current site. Um, one was long-term at Edward John Air High School. Another one was to refurbish the current site and another one was to move to a new greenfield site and build a completely new development. So I just sort of add that, um, as part of your thinking. I'm not gonna go into detail on that at the minute. However, back to this, what might a prospectus look like? What might be some of its content? Um, some description of our city at a glance, what's our city, what's happening in our city, uh, what developments are happening? What is this opportunity that we're actually presenting? So a bit of a market overview and key facts. So information about the main street, so Forsyth Street, um, Darling Terrace, um, Patterson Street. Um, what's a bit of a neighbourhood analysis around it? What does the development play and say in relation to this area? What's its zoning? What's its zoning? Give a bit of an area map. What is the existing site? What are the details? What's its current state? Has a building on it? What's the nature of that building? What's the land sla- size? What are some of the general conditions and rental rates that exist there? So it's really painting a picture in terms of what, what uh the opportunity is. Next slide, Grant, please. Um what are some of the outcomes that we're actually as a council seeking from this opportunity? What is our vision for the site? So councillor border, you started to talk a little bit uh earlier about what's our vision for the site. What public value are look, are we looking to achieve from the development of this site? What are our long-term accommodation needs and could our long-term accommodation needs be accommodated through the development of this site or not? Um uh what are some other government services or other um neighbouring uh parties that might also be interested in partnering or joining um in this particular um offering? What might be a possible deal structure that we would put in place? It could be a private partner, uh a private public partnership. Um are there leaseback opportunities? Is it an outright purchase? Um there's multiple other different deal structures that could be considered. What's some of the financial analysis, um very high level? What might be the capital required? What might be the return on investment that could be achieved from a development um by a private party of the site? And what's some of the decision-making information, uh both from council's point of view, but also from the investor's point of view? Where are the risk factors? What's the investor suitability? And what's going to be our selection criteria? What's going to be our decision-making criteria in, in this space? Um I'm going to pause on that, yep, to the next slide. So, um I, I think any questions first in terms of that before we actually talk about the pros and cons of going uh going for a prospectus?
So questions about the approach and what you'd potentially like to get um from, from the marketplace?
This is definitely not a negative statement, I'm a positive person, but I don't think people see any investment opportunities until the other developer business gets going, which is ugly. Once that gets up and running, what are people looking at? Lacks of availability in business, et cetera, et cetera. In the meantime, we won't have any, I don't think.
I respond to that in the first instance. There is already quite a lot of interest starting to grow in terms of um development opportunities within our city. Um so, um you know, Liberty are looking to try and find a site to put five hundred beds. Simon Mining are looking for a site to put a thousand beds. Lots of hydrogen power are looking for um where they might put their workers um coming into the city and um the respondents to the hydrogen jobs plan have been asked to, as part of the social impact assessment, to uh also give consideration to um to that, um the opportunity as well. Um we've had um three of the proponents contact us, um contact council to make those sorts of inquiries. So I think there is more eyeballs on um Wayala in terms of um those sorts of development opportunities. Um I admit that hasn't come to realisation in terms of an actual um project right here, right now, but I think it's, it's only a matter of time. Um I can't divulge the information, um but um I was late coming to this meeting because I had Renewal S A on the phone. Renewal S A are now also talking about um potential development within our city across multiple sites. Um so I think we're now starting to get to the boiling point, it's maybe the simmering point, it's better analogy. Things are now on the simmer, um and I think soon, um with the announcement of the hydrogen jobs plan, which we're expecting, probably late this month, early next month, um that'll give us a bit more, I, I think give the private sector a bit more interest, so. I accept your point, councillor Simpson. Um it feels like it's still a bit flat and a bit quiet, but I've um certainly the discussions that um councils receive or inquiries councils receive, I think there is a, a growing interest.
I know, it's weird, but what I'm saying is, it's a different type of investment you're looking for now. This is like, not without mental of, of, uh. It's a building you want right here. It's a retail environment or a hotel, whatever, but not fit, yes, I think we're doing it very good.
Um um I'll just check, are both the E D P D A's public? Point one.
Got, they've got three different proposals, two of those, the demolition and the new Bayview are public.
Yeah.
The others are not yet.
Yeah. Um we are aware that there are other development applications both received in hand and in, in the making, um which also talk about development in around this area as well.
I can add something that I mean goes to that without divulging anything about, once again, um any um details. We've already had one party um make contact with council and say they would be potentially willing to take the building as is. If that was one of the options. Now, we haven't, we haven't investigated that any further yet because we're having this conversation and we sort of come back to council. But it's interesting that that was, um you know, we didn't ask for that, that just came in when someone realised what was, you know, the, the, the steps were happening for them. So, you know, if, if there is some stuff happening in the town, that was a local as well.
Oh, they're saying that like, first will be from the outside here.
Yeah, nothing. When you say something's not negative, it means it's positive. I'm sorry, that's, that's good, that's good, that's good, that's good. Um so, do the, quick couple of questions, do the parties, the inquiry or the, the mood of the market? You mentioned it's public knowledge that the Bayview, I don't know what it is, but something happening there which is, which is good. Um and the demo proposal was, I'm assuming, was for this building as well, or for something else?
Happy for me to. The Bayview's their new um bottle shop and drive-through on the car park to the rear of their site, that's public knowledge.
Yeah.
And the demolition of the rear of the Spencer Hotel, the portion that was considered not um state heritage listed, so they've got state heritage um approval, and that will commence. Some land acquisitions have happened to um facilitate some further development, but those aren't public information yet.
Okay, and that's okay. So the, do the people that are still in acquiring, is the mood of the market maybe looking at this site and looking around this area, do they know of those things, oh, the baby's investing in the drive-through and they're knocking off a bid that's, you know, uh, I would say is. Does the market sort of know about that? Or is that kind of, you have to sort of, by the way, this is also happening in our city, here's another developer, a bit like real estate, who's pumping some serious cash in, I'm trying to join the party sort of thing.
Savvy developers generally have a look at your public register, so by law we have to have a register of development that, that's been approved, so that, that goes up. Um. I'm clean. I don't think it is. Um Australian student, um uh Australian buildings. I don't think of the term now. Oh yes, sorry. But, um keep a register also, so savvy developers generally have a look at what's happening, what's been improved in the area. Um land ownership also, those things are all available um freely through um um sailors. You can pick on anyone's uh land ownership parcel and you don't have to own it. Same as development applications, you can lodge an application without being an owner of, of the site. So those savvy developers do keep an eye on what's happening. What's, what's, you know, what's people have invested in, because D A's aren't cheap. Um so once they've invested to that point, it means they're serious, so.
Yeah, yeah.
And you keep an eye on those.
That's good, that's really good to hear. Um you mentioned just about, uh I think the words were something maritime, the word that, that things are starting to simmer. And the feeling that I get is a bit of a shift in the way, it probably, probably already the way that you guys are thinking about it, certainly I think from the council member's point of view, that while it's a tick along at a certain pace, very slow pace perhaps over the last however long before I was here. But the, the future is gonna be a rapidly dynamic and changing environment. But I would like to look at things through the lens of, we are actually now in the box seat, that we're gonna have these parcels of land, which previously were perhaps a burden, which are now gonna be hot for the market. And so I just think that as it's, the, the slide after this one, um I think covered off on all the major stuff and really points towards packaging up what we could offer, which I, I realise means that we need to know what our needs are as a council, as a tenant. But that's gonna be a big drawcard for a developer who may wanna buy this site if we were to decide to move back into this location. Um and just exhausting those opportunities the best we can to package it up so that it makes it as enticing as possible. Again, from that point of view of not just trying to, you know, settle the ship, but trying to really maximise it. And to that point, I remember Grant's drawbridge, um when we chose him for the um water risk committee, he said as much as it's risky, he really wants to focus on the opportunity. So I would love to hear his input and the whole order committee's input into this presentation here and what they saw from their experience.
Yeah.
What they see as the opportunity and how they would suggest we approach navigating this. What I can only see is just opportunity after opportunity.
If we just um talk into that subject of opportunity and scaling, which is in parts, um what some of those dot points are in terms of what do we go to market, um. As a, as a development site, if you think of this site, um can I share my screen? What the map that shows. There you go.
I used to do the bottom right hand.
Um so, as a development site, the blue box, that's about two thousand square meters. Um just, you know, just poking out now, we've got a, a laneway right next to us. Does the development site include that laneway? Do we need that laneway? Could we potentially look at developing over that, that laneway? Then you've got courthouse and police station across the, the laneway. Um you know, could that be potentially rolled into development site? So we end up with a development that has a mixed-use um facility, which we've, we've talked about before. Um so that, that conversation about what is in scope in terms of the um uh what we go to the market is something that's um in play at present. State government, I think it's been relatively slow getting the wheels turning, but I get the sense that the wheels are now starting to turn faster, but still a long way away from the state government committing to building a new police station and courthouse, but at least we're now getting to the point where that conversation may come onto the, onto the, um, onto the, the table. If you include in the courthouse and the police station, that ends up being about five and a half thousand, is that right? J- Jody, five and a half thousand square meters. So pretty big site, um lots of opportunity. Um if we go to the market to say, um part of what we want from the market is a future permanent place for council to conduct its business. Um one of the attractions of this site is that we own the site freehold, so we've got, we, we do actually have control of our own destiny. Um so one option that council could consider, I'm not saying that we would do this, but if we actually said we actually want to develop this site, we wanna be here and we also want the site to include X, Y and Z, we could be really thinking in terms of what we go to the market and say, this is what we wanna build on this site, who's interested in partnering with us to build what, what, what we want. So we, instead of going to the market with pretty much a, a blank um canvas and say, you know, everything from just selling the site to someone and let them do what they wanna do with the site, one on the spectrum for us actually being quite prescriptive um with the type of development we want on this site. Um we haven't gone to that end because my sense is that council has indicated in the past that you want to explore your options. Um so we, we're heading down that path of a request for proposal, but what I also want to put on the table is that council does have um other sites that we own freehold. So when it comes to that question about council wanting a permanent home, the other site that um uh we own is on Egglong Street. The stop sharing and reshare. Spring off Egglong. Sharing resharing. Spring me. Spring. Share. This um conversation does dovetail into our next item on the agenda tonight, which is around the pre-thing partnership. But um in the dollar blue lines is the, the land that council owns freehold on Egglong Street. Uh that site, sorry, I'm now wrong, it's about thirteen thousand five hundred square meters. So more than twice the size or three times this, or even more. Significantly larger than this site. Close to the centre of town, close to the shopping centre, close to our library, close to the childcare centre. So one of the things that we wanted to pose is if we're gonna go out to the markets um and look at um a development, this has been a development site, with council potentially having a home here. Do we also include the Egglong Street site? So that if the private sector, if you had a company that just wanted to build and invest in corporate facilities within Wayala, uh with an anchor tenant being council, they probably may not necessarily care where that site is because their return on investment would be on the list with council. We keep it simple though, it's a um council-only building, um just to simplify the conversation. They won't care necessarily where they build it because they're gonna get the same return on investment. Um if you think this is a greenfield site and Egglong Street's a greenfield site as well. So when we go to the market, do we actually look at putting two sites to the market and say to the private sector, here's two sites, tell us what you might wanna do with both sites? So coming back to the question about the, you know, the opportunity that we wanna take. Do we want to, you know, um see if we can get the state government support to um look at a development site that includes courthouse and police station? Do we want to look at Egglong Street as an alternate site for the future home for council? And again, same um proposition that we just wanna see what the market response is to help inform what decisions council makes um going from here. I mean hypothetically, you might have one proponent that wants to do X on this site and another proponent wants to do Y on another site. If you go out to the market, then council can weigh up the, the value of those respective um propositions on uh the two sites. Also, just opening up any questions or comments on the, the R F P.
The question?
Yes.
I was gonna address that. We might get on to that later, we, we're, we're gonna mention that one of the slides. So the thinking is that just because we go out with a prospectus doesn't mean we have to stop with some of the other work. So um the thing, the thinking was around a little bit like how we did with um moving to the high school site, um doing, starting an early contractor involvement process in terms of the demolition of this building, so that you're running sort of both processes together. If you do a prospectus, you still wanna be ready to demolish this building if the prospectus doesn't get the results that we want or expect. Okay, Gordon. Um so you get, you get a picture that we talked about a couple of weeks ago of this central corridor being developed and the idea of civic park area, um it's just a much bigger idea that we sort of all talked about, and I can't get detailed because I don't know the detail, but does this sort of, is it, is it one or the other? Like if we're starting to talk about the two sites, which I think the short answer would be yes, definitely go to the market. I've got to be go to the market for both of this specific location here and that site to give the developer the option. Um because I think that could play into how we decide what happens with Edward John Air High School and how that all goes into the hockey stadium and that bigger picture. But I just wonder, are we, is there any waste of energy and resources by going down this path? Instead of focusing on the sort of the five or ten year plan of a more mixed-use development on a larger scale, given where Wayala could be in five or ten years, that's a bit of a mindset shift that I struggle with. But the conservative risk averse part of me says just stick with the two proposals, that site and this site, sort of go, go with that. But then if I look where Waila will be in 10 years' time, um, yeah, I think maybe in that upper section where all the green is. Um, to keep all that green as best we can and, and maybe have that, that mixed use residential. Um, you know, we've mentioned about relocating the, if the state government wanted to do that, relocating the courts, the police station. Ultimate goal, I think, of having the council chamber, uh, the council at civic building and the police station on that spot there. Or somewhere close to that, I think is something that needs to be seriously aimed for. But I know there's lots of moving parts and lots of swings around events between here and then. So my question is, does going to the market like this preclude us from entertaining the bigger, bigger picture? At all, are we wasting resources?
I suppose the obvious res- response is it's unknown.
That's fine.
The obvious response is that it's, it's unknown because we don't know what we're going to get until we go to the market. So, um, there is a, a risk that we could. Um, either hook it and either complicate it. Um, the alternative is that it may actually segue into. Um, that future larger scale opportunity. So if we, if we just stick with, um, this one. That's on the screen at present, the, um, Egglong Street one. If we found a development partner who was interested in doing a mixed use development at significant scale. Let's, let's say five thousand square metres, no, no, let's go bigger, just to save this conversation. Um, eight thousand square metres. Um, this site here. Is not the site for them because we've only got two thousand square metres on this site. As someone says, we actually want to do a, a development that, um, would potentially provide for multiple. Government agencies and corporate offices and plus, 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 about the eight thousand square metres. They put their hand up for this site. With a passage of time, we then work out what the future of Edward John High School site is. And let's say we, um, that we end up with that being a, a corporate, um, CBD. We've already essentially done the shortlisting process and we could potentially run with that, that party, having gone through this ROI. RFP process to then say, well, what are we looking at doing on this site? Do it over the road on Edward John Air. Lots of questions and maybes and ifs and buts here. And the whole purpose of the, um, going to market is to see what sort of response we get. The RFP, if it's done in such a way that it gives us flexibility, so there's, it's not a non, um. It's not, um, a, a, a hard tender where we're lock, looking to lock someone in. Um, it would give council the ability to engage with potentially one or two parties to progress, um. What the development opportunities might, um, look like, uh, as we progress. So, um. The, it's a chicken and egg. Uh, I've been struggling with this one because on the white names, going back to one of my previous comments. If we were actually very clear as a council, where we want it to be. And if we said we wanted to be here and we, we, we had that clarity that we want to be here, um. And we know that we don't want a building solely for council purpose, we could go to the market with great confidence, knowing exactly what we want. We actually, unless the council laws and council, um, on the eighteen for September give a resolution to the contrary. My sense is that we don't actually have that clarity in terms of, um, where we want to be because we, we want to essentially go fishing and look at what could be. And that's where it becomes this, um, this, um, ambiguous process that until we start the process, we don't know where we're going to end up.
That killer discussion.
Yeah. Um, so, yeah, there's two ways to approach it and, um. Think the, the path that we're going down, which is to put the toe in the water, see what the market responds with. Um, we could be the pres- presently surprised, uh, or we could be, you know, really seriously disappointed. That we get, you know, no interest at all. Um, you ready?
And if I can put my two cents worth in, um, being we've had conversations about the main street for as long as I can remember. Um, about, you know, catalyst development or what's the development would stimulate the other, um, shops and, and the precinct in general. I think it's a missed opportunity if we don't go out to the prospectus and see what's there and, and do diligence for rate payers also. If, if there is some interest in the building and we've seen the costs worth five hundred to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to demolish. And that's leaving us with a, a vacant site and that, God knows where they find the basis, you know, it's the unknowns. If there is somebody else that is willing to do something, whether that what council is an anchor tenant. The catalyst conversation has been getting more people into this main street. So there are more people using our hotels, cafes. You know, those sorts of things and encourage other developments to come in here because there's more foot traffic, there's more people living directly in this area. I don't know the council's in the business or whether it should be in the business of knocking this down, redeveloping with another two stories of apartment type living. I don't know if the rate payer would be, um, fond of us spending our money on apartment type living, whereas a developer. Who might have the conversation with council and council be the anchor tenant should we want to stay here, um, and do accommodation above. For me, that's a win, that, you know, the demolition, all those costs and whatever go with there. It might be that council puts their hand up and says, you know what? You're going to do this fantastic development. The site's free, you know? And as a rate payer, you know, we've looked at other, offloading other buildings that we know are going to cost us a lot of money. Um, I think if we don't get down the path, we might get crickets, but I think it's a great opportunity to see what we might have. And to at least tick the box and say, we know there was no interest, um, so, you know, it's on council's shoulders. I like that, what do you?
That's what waving with two cents. And I think that's, yeah, I've got, that's really proven why I'm doing it. And I think from the perspective of. At least just going through that process to say, we went down that path, there was nothing there, so we had to go and look at other things, can't just stay stagnant. Um, I guess, yeah, the, the unknowns on two parts, we don't know what the opportunity will be. And, yeah, I, I just keep relevant in my mind of what is our core focus. And rather than being divided over five or six different, you know, areas of special, speciality and developing a property and renting it out and. Getting a return on investment for the, for the rate pays, maybe leave it to someone that leaves some profit in the deal for them to clear it out into it. Um, yeah, there's some good things to think about.
Other questions or comments around the prospectus, what it includes, doesn't include. What's the news about two sites, this side and Egglong? You want to put the tongue in the water for both or do you want to just keep a focus on this one?
So how long in term future topic is that?
I'd say that.
How long in term future should we get Egglong through? How bad in here?
Other comments?
I, I think we have to look at both, um, to, uh, I'm going to segue into a bigger discussion if it wants to go that way. I think it hedges our bets that covers off on, we're at least exploring this, or at least. That we are doing the, um, prudent thing of exploring what the potential is with this site and what development may come forward and whether we're an attractive anchor tenant. In this location or at Eggbomb's, Eggbomb Street. And, yeah, I am really torn when I throw it around in my own mind of. Yeah, being the, the drawcard here, encouraging more development in the main street for all the reasons we've mentioned. Um, also being geographically located in the centre of town. And what that may attract into the centre of town and certainly a lot maybe of going, at least in the courts, um, that way as well. I think, yeah, hedging our bets a little bit and exploring both in parallel and having both as part of the prospectus. To directly answer your question, I think having both on the prospectus is the way to go.
Agree. Just curious, so like you mentioned that there's other land home on council. Not that would be suitable for a civic centre redevelopment that comes to mind top of head. I think Egglong and this site would be the only two that are suitable. We do have other land, but not suitable for a civic centre. Castle Westerman? These are comments.
I think I've got Peter Borne invested in, um, look at both sides, just to see what's available and what options.
Yeah, uh, Mayor Stone?
Yes, I think we do need to look at both sites there. We have told the community that we'll go out and consult, engage with them. And present various options. And I think they're the obvious two that we do need to look at and then weigh them both up once, uh. All the expressions of interest flooding.
Um, other councillors that are on site, did, sorry, online, did you have any comments that you want to make at this point? Otherwise we'll. Move on. Right, okay, we'll go to the next slide then. Oh, sorry, back to you Cathy. Do you want to sort of close out on this one or go to the next slide?
No, 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 go to the next slide. Also, I'm having trouble with my internet, so, um, it's cutting in and out, my apologies. Um, so next steps therefore, um, we are bringing a report to the eighteenth of September meeting. In relation to this topic, and I think that given what discussion has been held here tonight. Um, we will, uh, be recommending that we develop a prospectus. Uh, rather than going with either options one or two, as we discussed earlier in this presentation. And then on the basis of that last conversation, um, that prospectus will be looking at both sites, both Egglong. Street and also the Civic Centre Darling Street, um, Darling Terrace site. So we'll bring that back to the eighteenth of September council meeting. Indicative timelines in terms of getting this moving, um, acknowledging that we are moving out of the civic building. On, uh, the week commencing, the thirtieth of October. So we look, we will look to have a prospectus issued by mid-November. Um, closing the prospectus, uh, end of January so that there is plenty of time acknowledging though that's over the Christmas period. So we'll need to, uh, just look and, and, uh, uh, and test that timeframe. Um, during February and March to assess the offers coming through and then, um, end of March, April. To, uh, determine the offer that comes through. Um, Grant mentioned earlier that in parallel to this, we'll run an early contractor invol- uh. Early contractor involvement process in terms of the demolition of the civic building. Um, so that in the event that the prospectus doesn't materialise a, an approach which is going to make the building safe. Uh, we will get the building demolished by July twenty twenty four. So, um, that ECI process will run in parallel. And it will give us the information that we need in order to engage a contractor to do the demolition and salvaging. And, uh, minor improvements to the site. Uh, we hope that that's not going to be required. We do hope that the prospectus process. Does give rise to some fabulous interest, um, and some interesting interest, uh, that we can, um, uh, move forward in that space. Next slide, Grant. Okay, and.
Right, just before you move on, Cathy, um, just, just the completeness, any questions or comments on that? Suggested timeframe and springing the report back to the eighteenth of September. Anything else that councillors would specifically like us to address in that report that we haven't possibly touched on tonight?
Um, it might not be in this specific area, but just the, the thought, you know, what method can we use to quantify the pros and cons? Of both Egglong and Darling Terrace. I'm not sure if it fits in with this here, but I thought I'd just mention it, um. I don't, I, I find it hard to compare. It's like, those are not just, so if there is, if there is a method or what can we develop to be able to get some sort of guidance? So here are the pros and cons for Egglong and here are the pros and cons for Darling Terrace. Here's the weighting we would give to each one. Just something to keep in the back of our minds. Again, I'm not sure if it fits in with the prospectus discussion, but I just thought of mentioning it. But other than that, I think those timeframes look really good, um, as far as they make logical sense to me. Um, you know, see both of them as, as is being outlined.
Yeah, um, thanks for that, Peter.
In terms of that quantification, no pros and cons, um, not sure if Cathy is sitting because I've distracted with a text message. But, um, one of the things that we will need to do, um, during, or during or leading up to the RFP is to work on. Um, coming up with some indicators of public value and what way we put on different, um, considerations that may have all been former. Um, that, that discussion can be caused, um, when we do get the, the proposals.
Yep, absolutely. We've started to work around that. Uh, yep, um, so moving on from that, and of course, that's a conversation around the, um. Uh, the, the demolition of the civic building and, um, we mentioned previously that we will be looking to do some celebrations. At the civic, civic building, um, and we've pulled together a bit of a programme and so just briefly, I wanted to mention what that will be. We want to celebrate the sixty year history of the building, acknowledge the contribution of past and present mayors, councillors and staff. And also to enable the community to farewell the building, including the old cinema. There's a lot of memories that, um, uh, that the building holds and it's incumbent on us to help residents of Waila. Sort of, uh, touch base and, and tap into those memories. So a couple of things that we're planning. Uh, we are planning to hold a community open day on Saturday, the twenty first of October. Uh, we'll run a sausage sizzle, uh, possible entertainment, uh, we'll put some background videos and some music playing in the chamber. Uh, there'll be a rather large photo display in the chamber as well with memory books for people to record their memories. Um, uh, we'll provide an opportunity for council members and staff, both current and former, to sign a physical wall. So, you know, I mean, the building is, is likely to be demolished, but, um, you know, we'll create a, a canvas whereby people can sign. Staff and members, uh, sign the wall, uh, leave a message and we'll run on the twenty first of October. Uh, tours every half an hour. Um, those tours will go through a number of different, um, areas. Within the building. So, um, we'll explain the current chamber, how it was built inside the cinema. Uh, go into the mayor's office, it was part of the two thousand and six refurbishment. Um, we'll go and have a look at the original entrance to the cinema, then head up to the David Knox room. Back down to the chamber and then into city growth, showing where the former cinema entrance was and the ticket booth. Um, where the candy bar was located, uh, the toilets, um, go to the old cinema upstairs. And then head back to the chamber and look at more pictures. So that's sort of the proposed tour, uh, route. And then the next slide, um, we'll on the eighteenth of October, hold an event for dignitaries and, um, those dignitaries will be former elected members. Former, um, you know, key staff, um, from, uh, years gone by, uh, have that from four thirty in the afternoon. Um, um, and as per a community, as per the community day, there'll be photo displays and videos and tours and a memory book, et cetera. Um, we'll, we'll do all of this within our current budget. Uh, next slide, Grant. So, uh, these are some of the, the pictures and, uh, we'll show people on the tours as to the balcony and the mayor's visit. This is the old candy bar, um. This is where the candy bar was, uh, so this is it now. So, um, this is in the regulatory services area and, uh, the customer service area is the old candy bar area. Next slide. Picture of Batman. Old cinema. And this is the projector room as it currently is now. Uh, it's just a, a few clips that, and a few pictures that we'll have around the room and, um, and also that people will be able to see. And we'll point out some of those, um, um, unique parts within the building. And so I just wanted to share with you what we are planning in terms of the, um, civic building celebration. Um, and, uh, the Saturday open day should be a fun day.
Okay, councillors, any questions or comments on the last bit, which is, um, part of our change management. Like I say, for a new beginning, there needs to be a closing, um, so this is our way of closing out the. The history of this building and hopefully, um, enabling people to move on to the next chapter.
Gordon, I think that was fantastic. There was, um, some emotion that stirred within me looking at the cinema and I think that all, and I don't, I have a dear for the, um. The heyday of it, but yeah, I'll sort of echo your thoughts of the closure of this chapter. And the opening of a new chapter was in unknown. Um, I think it's a real opportunity to connect with the community and kind of share in. For lack of a better way of putting it, the like, the loss or the grief of, of what it might bring up. Um, I think it's a real opportunity to connect with the community and kind of share in, for lack of a better way, putting it in like the loss or the grief of, of what it might bring up in people. Um, but then to, to very quickly be with them and, and look into the future of the unknown and, and what opportunity that might bring. Just like the people that first founded Wayala, the opportunity that they saw. I mean, we are, yeah, we're seeing that repeat in a very different time and context. But there is, you know, brilliantly the excitement and anticipation, but let's pause for a moment and remember what we've come through. All the people who saw those movies and the candy bar and the nostalgia, I think is hugely important as well. So we'll, I think that looks like a great day.
Yeah, I agree, great idea. Should have lost very well. Councillor, and councillor online confirming that she likes an idea as well. Um, all right, uh so there seems to be good support for that, so we'll progress on that line. Um, what I'm going to suggest now, councillors, is that we stop for refreshments and meal break. Um, I'm going to give us fifteen minutes, um so we'll resume the meeting at seven o'clock with the second item on tonight suggested, which is around the precinct partnership. There will be some overlap, um so we'll provide a bit of an update in terms of some of the discussions that we've been having with the state governments. And trying to mobilise some, some interest in uh development and what sort of development happens across our city. So uh we'll be going to that at seven o'clock. So if those are online, if you want to go and grab a cup of tea or invite with. We'll re, resume the meeting at seven. Yeah, thank you. Fine. Um, next slide in this in relation to the precinct partnership, which is what I might do in the first instance is um. Um, I'm straight to provide an update on um what's been happening over the last couple of weeks after we. If this, the broader concept of um the precinct um opportunities, particularly around the western, probably around the central. Um, precinct of Wayala, so if that's all right with you Jade, I'll hand it over to you if you can give us a bit of an update and talk about um. Um, what's been happening over the last couple of weeks.
Sure, can everyone hear me okay?
Yep. All good, thank you.
I am in Wayala, I have just um not been well. I thought I'd stay away. Right now I've got an allergic reaction to the air peninsula, which makes me look like a puffer fish, so um. I'll, I'll just stay home at Alcatraz tonight. Anyway. Since uh we sent the letter outlining our proposition for a sporting-led precinct development. Uh, MP Eddie Hughes has attended the State Centre or the sports hub that sits adjacent to the Roma Mitchell Secondary School. Uh, the first super school that was constructed in Adelaide and on that very day, I received a text message saying that. It would seem that FSA, Football South Australia, would be a good project manager and lead of such a development in Wayala. And he would be interested in supporting that. By that, I interpreted a contribution of some, if not um the majority of the six million dollars. That was a positive sign because I knew that um the State Centre's proposition is integral to the school. And therefore leads us to that parcel of um undeveloped land behind our super school and um near the TAFE and the university. So that's a, a forward movement. Um, since that time, FSA have been in negotiations with Office of Sport and Rec. And I haven't been updated on the results of those negotiations. But um more exciting than all of that. Um, hint of positivity in having more flexibility around where we can spend the six million and it contributing to a greater amount of investment. Um, has been the announcement of the precinct partnership funding round with the Australian Government. Which is to run over three years, is a stage one, stage two process. Um, stage one being a grant amount of up to five hundred thousand dollars to prepare your investment prospectus. With stage two being up to five hundred million for your fifty million, sorry, I got excited, that's the histamine's talking. Oh, I love doing this on drugs. Anyway, um. Uh, up to fifty million um to bring your investment to life. Uh, so the team and I have worked every day on this since hearing that announcement. We believe this funding round over the next three years. Um, if it doesn't come to a life for at least one of our precincts, we'll be, we'll be deeply upset. But we believe there's a number of precincts we could certainly use this funding for, or put forward some precincts for. Outside of the Australian Government deciding to do anything of a, a larger nature for um green transformation towns. This is our best bet and we have to take it for what it's worth at face value at the moment and, and assume that nothing else might come. Um, so what we've been doing is working on which methodology we've observed around Australia. That would be a good one for us to follow. The stage one part of the gra- uh grant amount allows you to do all your investigative work, all your analysis work. Um, for the precincts. So all I could think about was this grant round when you were having the discussion earlier about where the civic build might be. Because um as Justin and councillor Border and, and actually councillor Simpson acknowledged. There's so many unknowns and so many indeterminants that we could talk ourselves um silly trying to figure it out. Um, when the reality is there's lots of methodologies we can use and lots of um analysis and we can put a really um. Uh, to pay homage to the WTF work we've done, we can actually um have it led by community. So one of the methodologies we've most um observed as, as having great relevance to Wayala is Burke Dale. Um, they used a similar Australian Government funding process to develop their community precinct guide. Um, huge big parcels of land in and around their districts. Um, and their process kicking off with a competition by the community um. Uh, as to how they would reimagine their central precincts. Um, right through to the opportunities and constraints analysis, which was next led, which, which very much seems like much of the debate we, we were having this evening. Um, through to a community precinct design guide, a master plan foundation report. Um, uh, and leading to their visioning um document for what can occur in that precinct. So uh we'll still continue our research, but for now, that's a, a methodology we seek to employ. So by that, what we could do is apply for that stage one grant. Um, out, outlining those bodies of work that would need to be commissioned and have that grant funded. Um, it's not matching funding, so um it, it acknowledges that for regional townships, most of this. Detail, opportunities and analysis work is out of the realms of our budget. And certainly perhaps missing from a bit of our conversation tonight is our financial position, which we know is not great. Um, and picking up, I think councillor Simpson actually made a very crucial point. Um, we can't continue to be the only catalyst developer in town. We, we need to see that private market make a clear signal to this community that they are on the move and they are bringing things out of the ground. Um, I think that goes hand in hand with what we, we would try to do with this, with this grant round. Um, so there leads us to what precincts we might use to apply for these funding round. At this stage, we believe the central CBD precinct, um the foreshore precinct and possibly. Um, the Cuttlefish Coast precinct uh are right up there. Floating off the page, I guess, is um what we call the airport. Um, and, and around that Tandera cultural tourism heritage, um they're, they're sitting just off the page in terms of priorities. But I'd be interested to know if anyone has any questions now before I dribble on in my antihistamine phase.
Okay, thank you Jade. Um, any additional questions or comments in terms of the, that introduction?
I think that's spot on Jade, I think that order of priority there in investigating the central CBD precinct. Um, at front and centre is, is where it should be. Well done.
Um, any other questions or comments? I just um add into that, um and I have to first acknowledge that I haven't read it. Um, myself, but my understanding is that with the federal government funding. Um, the precinct partnership funding, uh the key message that we've heard multiple times from us, from the federal government. Is that any application that um a councillor puts forward has to be supported by both the RDA and the state governments. Um, I'm not sure if anyone in the room has read the guidelines, um but I think it's implicit that we need state government support. Um, not yet tested, um but will be tested very shortly. Um, and councillors can, will be aware that probably eighteen months ago, we put together the Wayala Precinct Partnership um document. Uh, we so advised that with this federalist um state government after both the last federal and state government uh elections respectively. Um, the feedback that we've had from the state so far has primarily come through the Office of um, the Department of Premier Cabinet. And the, certainly the strong feedback that we've got from the, the chief executive officer from the Department of Premier Cabinet. Um, is that the state will become. Um, probably not partnered with us specifically for Wayala as a standalone city. They'll want to look at the overall region more broadly, that's the, the precincts. How that plays out um is still to be determined, but um we do have mayor Stone will be attending a Spencer Gough. Cities um meeting with Minister Brock and Damian Walker on Thursday this week. Um, we know that the state government for some time has been putting together a. Having not seen it, I'll call it the Green Regent's proposal to go through to the federal government. Um, which looks at all three cities. So we expect to get more line of sight to what's included in that document um on Thursday. Um, and uh we understand again, the absence of not seeing the documents and being told to the contrary. That the state um has uplifted a lot of the information that we had previously put to them, both in the form of the precinct partnership. Um, as well as supplementary information. Um, having said all that, um the central precinct um was certainly front and centre. As those councillors that were on board at the time, leading up to the last state government election. Um, one of our key state government election advocacy pieces was around doing a master plan for the central CBD. Um, which puts its arms around, yeah, we're joining our high school sites, um you know, that whole Ekblon area. Uh, the rec centre, the childcare centre, uh et cetera, and the, the new high school um site. Uh, while a secondary college site, um so uh certainly I think there's, um that should be one of the key focus areas. And the four-year precincts, we've done the master plan and we admitted to progressing um that, that master plan. Having said that, um in both of those two sites, we've got significant um parcels of land that are owned by the state governments. And through multiple discussions that um Jade and myself. And the mayor, um have been having with different state government agencies. Uh, we've been seeking to get a joint up conversation across state government agencies as to the future use of some of those sites. Um, we've touched on um the central CBD, or sorry, the central uh precincts a bit tonight with our discussion around Ekblon. Um, certainly the letter that went through to the state government, the last letter that went states through, through the state government was to look at how we could. Uh, link um workers' accommodation with sport and rec uh facilities in our city. And get mutual benefit for both workers and um our community in terms of sporting facilities. Particularly with a focus on uh soccer. Um, uh behind the, the TAFE College, um built back and potentially behind the University of S.A. Uh, which is at the bottom right-hand side of uh the image on your screen. Um, as recently as today, I have received a call for renewal and um. I believe that the state governments have now agreed that one of our, our key um needs as a city is to. Um, have a conversation in conjunction with the state government about what type of development occurs where in our city. So, you know, where should workers' accommodation be? Where should a civic precinct um be, um including a council chamber? Where should police station be? Where should courthouse be? Um, how, how, um, how should a site like Playton Reserve? The Old Pony Club site, the Ebby Johnny High School site, the Wayala High School site, which are all owned by the state? How can they be developed over time? Um, to get an agreed vision or a roadmap forward in terms of how to enable some of that land to become available for development purposes. So um that central precinct and the foreshore precinct in my mind certainly are. You know, number one, number two priorities, so that's where I think we need to keep our, our effort at focus. Um, and having said that, uh the Cuttlefish um um diet site, we know needs to be attended to. Given the huge um success of the last Cuttlefish season and I saw the media releases uh go out today and. Now, folks, ten thousand people, I had six thousand in my head up until that media release went out, so even uh bigger than what um we had. Um, been there to believe before. So the reason I just put all of that sort of out there is that there's lots of moving uh pieces here. Um, we certainly, as the, as the councillors, the city need to drive a lot of that discussion because this is our city and our place. Having said that, now the state government is a really significant stakeholder, given that they own a lot of significant parcels of land. Um, so we do need to uh get them engaged and um in all that context. For the meeting with Minister Brock and the CEO of Department of Premier Cabinet, which will also have. Other ministers also in attendance on Thursday. Um, we've now been requested to provide a ten-minute um briefing as to what are the key priorities for our city? What do we want to work with the state government on? Um, and what essentially is um our key needs at this point in time. So um, um, we'll focus on that need for that joined up conversation and to enable that aggregation of development. And the unlocking of what is currently state government lands or some of that development um to receive. Again, I'll press pause there, um with that a little bit. More sort of information uh about, for, for processing, any questions or comments? On those two focus areas being around the central precinct and the foreshore precinct?
You're adopted by Zan, but. Well, generally.
I think it's probably fair to share um that there, there seems to be a um. A nervousness, for want of a better term, from the state government around things like workers' accommodation and where that might be cited. Um, um, my sense is that the validity of that still proposal, we mind the, the um. Uh, Millback Arts Centre, it's got a little bit of headwind at present um from different orders. And unfortunately, again, this is my, my personal view, so my sense is that. Um, people have heard about that facility and so gone straight to sort of the, the traditional mining camp type. Um, type of developments and concern about, you know, um. Laborers and mining camp people being right next to a, um, a high school. Um, unfortunately, I, I think that's unfortunate because my sense, albeit it needs some curating and, and convalescing. But for all intents and purposes, um what is being proposed on that side is the equivalent of the play for the palm. It's been, it's been three levels, it's one level. So the same type of people in residential facility that reside in the Palmer's apartment. In the case of Palmer's apartment, that's right across the road from the, the Bradford Reserve, um which gets used by a lot of um. Younger people within our community, so I'm not. younger people within our community, so I'm not sure why um the back of the the um the Middleback Arts Centre is getting as much headwind as what it is. But having said that, that is the the tip of the iceberg. Um, that was a five hundred bed facility that was largely um aimed at accommodating the professional people coming into uh the city to work on the electric art furnace um and that still works. Separate to that, we do have um a construction facility that Simon Mining is looking for for their um transition from human to magnify, which will probably be closer to a thousand bed um facility. The key question for all of us is where should that facility be located? In or around our city? Um, and I'll just put that out as a rhetorical question. It's um um one that doesn't in my mind have a clear answer, um. That's before we then talk about hydrogen jobs plan, before we then talk about four point nine hundred, uh before we talk about other development that happened in around um our city or region um over coming years, so um, you know, all of these conversations will need to unpack in due course, but my sense is that the state government, you know, close to um putting some money on the table to enable us to do um that citywide um plan to look at what sort of development should occur where across our city um at at that highest level. Um, and potentially also some money towards um master planning a couple of the key sites in particular ever John Air and um Waila High School site, um. So we'll wait and see how that pans hopefully in the not too distant future. Um, the, just adding a little bit more uh information, then I'll come to Peter Border, a council border, um, the precinct partnership funding from the federal government is not like traditional um grant opportunities where there are hard deadlines in terms of funding rounds and you need to submit by a certain time. It's basically open ended for a three year period. Um, having said that, um, there's a hundred and forty million dollars, I think that is available um in that fund at this point in time. And there's the old cliche that um first invest best. So um on Thursday, we will be pushing hard to try and understand what the state government is prepared to work with us on um in order to get that uh application uh into the federal government. Um, because we don't wanna lose, you know, one or two years flapping around and find out that everyone else has got in before us and there's no money left in the kitty when we we, the royal we, get ourselves um organised and ready to have that conversation with the best. One hundred million, sorry, thank you. I knew I had a four in it. Thank you. Um, all right, so councillor border.
Thanks, Justin. Just wanted to come on um the community comments that Amy made or whatever has carved. Is it carved or is it just delaying, like the headwind is just delaying it, or it's kind of like they can't go in there anymore and G F G have been?
No, it's still a work in progress. Um, I don't I don't think um either G F G or the state government have got to a final decision point at present, um. Where things are up to at present is that um um, the the Tafe Board need to say that they're prepared to list the lands, um. Some of the sensitivity has come up and as I understand, the Tafe Board is having workers facilities right next door to a secondary college. Um, I'm not sure if uh if Liberty and Jake can chip in in a sec, um whether Liberty has actually spoken to the secondary college about being, you know, a neighbour. Um, and what this the secondary college's view is on that. Um, um, depending on the transaction to be undertaken, renewal S A may have to become um party to the transaction to enable the development, which means there needs to be a transfer from one government agency to another, so uh there's a county trust over the land for education purposes, so what started off, you know, seeming like a reasonably simple exercise, we're now finding that there's extra layers um that needs to be worked through. Um, at the end of the day, the fundamental um part of the problem or challenge or opportunity, depending on which frame of lens, is that G F G wants to invest in accommodation in our city. The question is how and where and what does that that accommodation look like? So that's still a work in progress.
Yeah.
Um, just before I continue on, Jake, have you got any other intel regarding conversations that Liberty may have had with um the school or others?
No, I think you've covered it. A a lot of, a lot of, the only uh thing I'd add is, it's not so much about uh where these things go specifically, it's it's how they are built. So I mentioned that Burke Dale Community Precinct Design Guide. Um, that's where you get, that's what we need, some sort of strict uh controls, not controls, guidance and direction on what we would anticipate a workers village being established in the heart of our city and how that should be something that the governments support and encourage. It will need additional costs, it will need additional oversight and administration and landscaping if it's not rolled into tourist accommodation and run like a like a caravan park that has that twenty four hour, three sixty five degree oversight of of the goings on, um. It's it's about getting that level of expectation and support for that. Obviously, we don't want, yeah, Waila is the model um city that developed from let's shove a few tents in the dunes and see how everyone goes to let's put them in bricks and mortar but isolated it alone to getting them into a city and building a town. So we we know it doesn't work, but we know it takes extra effort on a government's behalf to support that um uh humanity side of um what a worker's uh village really is, which is people, they're humans, um. And we need to have that discussion with the community and we we should be using our and we will be using our W T F and those types of things to actually start to have that talk with within the community so that they understand um what the benefit would be to have human beings who are here, even if it's temporary, even if it's FIFO, even if it's DIFO, where they should be and how they should interact and what we can do to support them. Um, that's very important. It's more important discussion to have than where pinpoint things go full stop. And I think that's where renewal and and the developers have come a little bit unstuck because it's that it's that concept of the Atcoha style um social um breakdown that you'd see from that very basic, very cheap, very fast, quick and dirty establishment versus something that's got a little bit more thought and planning to it. And I think um we're getting there, we're we're getting all the right people around the table, understanding that it benefits all. And in particular, it'll benefit um Simac, G F G, Hydrogen S A, because the workers that they will want to attract will not want to come to those desolate, isolated villages if you can go to Western Australia and and live in a resort and have your family with you.
And that was sort of said as could be perceived as a bit of a throwaway statement, but that is the reality. Um, there are companies over in Western Australia that are effectively now providing the equivalent of resort accommodation to attract families um to go into some of those locations um to be able to attract the workforce that they they need. Uh, councillor border.
Okay, this quite, I think you just encapsulated it so, so well, uh, Jake. And the notes that I had made is that when Justin was talking initially, it's about perception. It's about P R, I think being proactive, telling the story, as you just articulated, let's put that on a brochure and send it to all the residents. Sharing the facts of the clear alignment of what you described with what the community would want, what the workers will want and what the industry will want to provide that accommodation. I think the thread between all of that, I don't know what it is, but yeah, if if I agree with it's council led, just to tie that all together, I think is is um so important. The community sentiment, I think, is something that that we as councillors um can can have a a more active role in in just letting everybody know we hear your concerns, we want the approachability of share your concerns with us, that we can share with you what the actual truth is, because if the percentage is workers accommodation, um, I love the, you know, the sort of three stages, tents in a side of a mountain, then throw in some bricks and water and then now the resort style. You know, there's a, there's a catchy phrase there of one, two, three, we're not gonna do the first two ever again. Um, so I really think that's something that threads of that together, the humanity side on both sides for the worker of where they're gonna stay and also for their neighbours, for the community, so that the neighbours can be alleviated of their concern. And there's some anecdotal evidence, I put a a note on Facebook about a two bedroom unit and in about forty five to sixty minutes, I had two phone calls, because I probably they probably messaged me, I said my my number, I said, give me a ring if you're serious. Um, one was from a company, two companies, I don't, I don't wanna name them, but big around Waila and they are flying workers in from Sydney, this is probably not news to anybody, but they just said it's just so expensive to do that. And the the sort of money that they were offering for this basic unit accommodation, maybe wanna buy twenty of them in Waila. The demand is absolutely there, um, and yeah, they need workers so that the the city can move forward. So what do we have to do to 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 share the story? I think that, yeah, I I would hate to see the bottleneck just being the way that we're presenting information. And I see that as a huge opportunity to provide just the facts and get people on board. I don't know how we do that, I think being impossible versus a start.
Any other comments? Mayor, uh, just wanna check in with you, you've been involved with a number of conversations with ministers and keep your practice, did you have anything else that you wanted to add at this point in time?
Not at this stage, uh, C E O. Other do, other than to probably support your comments that finally there might be some movement that they, there is a a better uh recognition that things are actually going to happen. Uh, and there is more work being done behind the scenes, albeit a bit late. But hopefully now heading in the right direction and Thursday will certainly give us a good idea of just exactly where the government is standing at the moment.
There's no other comments on that. Um, I think we'll move on to the second one item. Uh, apologies, dropped the includes the standard, the general item, uh, which was question and answers from councillors, so if you've got other matters that you'd like to ask questions about, uh, we will provide that opportunity um shortly, if there's anything that you want to 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 raise. Uh, the third item is around the landscape board, um, and um now that I've just said that, I also have to apologize that it was remiss of me not to uh welcome and acknowledge Mark Whitfield. Leonard Fields, sorry, Whitfield, nevermind. Um, who was the previous chair of the the E P Landscape Board. Um, Mark has uh recently joined us, two weeks ago, one week ago, um, to working our governance area for a six month period initially, so I think most of you in this room would know Mark pretty well and it's a very familiar face around um around Waila, so uh welcome, Mark. Um, the, at the um E P L G A meeting last week, um, the new chair of the landscape board, Peter Tralor, uh, provided a presentation to the E P L G A, um. And in his update, he made reference to the fact that there are um has been two recent um resignations from the landscape board um for people needing to 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 stand down from the board, uh, for I think largely professional reasons with other commitments. So in the not too distant future, the landscape board will be looking for two new um board recruitments. Um, not in a in a derogative um or discriminative manner. Um, in terms of gender balance on the board, it is likely that those two members will need to be females. Um, given that the two, as I understand, the two people that have stood down are both females, so in terms of gender balance, um, there will be a positive disposition towards a female board member, so I just wanted to raise that um in this forum today, um, just put the question out if you know of anyone who you think might be a suitable um um person for consideration um for that role in due course. Um, if you wanna share that name with me, I'm happy to pass that name on to uh Peter Tralor, so he's got that those people on his radar. Um, um, as of all uh positions, it will be an an open call at some stage and it will be a full um um uh merit based process, but um just do you wanna take the opportunity if if anyone did uh or was aware of someone, be that all would be suitable for that that role, um, if you can let us know. Um, just checking, Mayor, did you have anything that you wanted to add on that one, Mike?
I think you've covered that.
Okay, so then we'll get to the last item for tonight, which is um just other business, if there's any um questions or issues that councillors would like to to raise um in this forum, because it's an informal uh forum. Uh, it does provide an opportunity if councillors got, you know, has, you know, a a rank, a um ask them a question and like you wanna get an answer to that question or you've seen something that you would like to say wise, but you know, council doing or not doing something. Um, uh, we appreciate being able to deal with those matters sort of in this forum. Um, as opposed to questions without notice at the council meeting, which um we tend to have to try and do on the fly. Um, our current meeting procedures, um, currently require that questions on on notice at the meeting need to be recorded in the minutes, including the answer. Um, so, um, if they are largely administrative of nature or you're just asking for a, you know, one question answer or you want some information, um, this is the the more preferred forum to ask those sorts of questions, so um, I just give you that that background and then I'll open up if anyone got any questions or comments or issues or concerns, councillor symptom. The question on how your meeting went with any news yesterday? Last week, I think, well. But we we, well, you know, any, a comment on that development behind the unit with the G F G housing? A lot of negative comments were characterised by positive comments too. Some people being forward to rather than against them. Um, Mayor Stone, would you like to respond in the first instance or do you might need to respond to the first question about how our meeting with um like never went?
So I dare suggest uh our member came on quite strongly. I thought quite aggressively, quite defensively. Uh, but did acknowledge towards the end that he came on a bit strong. And I think what you and Jade have achieved in highlighting why we're trying to do what we did or have done and using examples in Adelaide, and I know Jade had him down in Adelaide. And uh he changed his tune about this emphasis on what he was looking at. So I I think we had some robust discussion during the course of uh our meeting. And I do think we have made him realise that there is more to what we're trying to achieve for the city than just his election commitment of spending six million dollars on Edward John Air. As we did point out to him, it is not our property, it's not our site. So it's very difficult for us to uh support something when we have no necess, no future tenure there. So enough from me, certainly, uh, C E O, if you wanna cover the rest of it. But I think the outcome of that meeting, uh, we have him, well, I hope we have him more on side than prior to that meeting.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, so, yep, agree with that, that comment. Um, I think there was probably three or four outcomes from the discussion, or four actually. Uh, one was that um um that Eddie Hughes indicated that what he would look to do was to set up a meeting uh for our council to make with Minister Champion around um housing and development more broadly, because we explained some of the challenges that we're having, um, getting uh some forward movements um um on on development within our city. Um, he got it down in his piece of paper, um, the reference to the work that D P C has been doing in terms of preparing the federal advocacy documents. So I think he was gonna go and make some inquiries about that, noting that he will also be an attendee as far from where, unless it's As far as from where, unless it's an apology, at the meeting on Thursday. So he will uh be front and centre for that conversation around. What that border piece looks like in terms of the engagement with the federal government. Um the third item was that he um um. Agreed to visit the Roman Mitchell um high school site, to have a look um at that site. Together with uh Football S A. And I have to give credit where credit's due, um a lot of the heavy lifting and the the I P from. From um that's that soccer and sport infrastructure opportunity um has come from and has been driven by Jade. So Jade's done some fantastic work behind the scenes, um positioning our council well in terms of potentially accessing. Uh some more funding and and getting that that forward movement on that front. And there was a fourth item, which I can't remember now, but I said there was four, so I might stick with with three. Um. Yeah, I think I'll stop there.
Thank you. That was a really good update. And I, we we need to thank Jade for all the work she's doing on this forefront, on this bug too as well. She's done an excellent job today.
Yes, yeah.
That's a team effort, but thank you very much. And my body's falling apart.
As long as your mind doesn't fall apart. But in your mind.
Seems to be, seems to be enhanced on drugs, so let's stick, stick.
Yeah. Um there was two parts to your question. One was around E and what was the second?
The other was just saying that the public now more on side with this D F G thing.
Yeah.
Than they were at the beginning.
Um yes, um well, I mean, also I'll raise in a minute, but I'll come keep it open first. Any other questions? Need some clarification?
Um hotel development, do we have any update on where they are? I have just approached, or community manager is saying, we're up to. Delay, 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 usual story.
Yeah, where's the issue? Yes, so look, I think that's very fast approaching um um. Natural conclusion. Um the current settlement date, without divulging too much information, which may be confidential. Is the twentieth of September. Um so um my understanding is that um certain things happen to happen uh by that date. Um so um I can watch his face, there'll be some some movement on that front. Um one way or the other, over the next couple of weeks.
Conclusion thumbs up or thumbs down or I'm disposed?
Not sure, probably not sure, not sure. So I think um council laws are aware that the developer was. Um had sought some support from the state government. Um that support was uh twofold. One was. Um potentially a uh an access to a five million dollar loan. Similar to what the state government previously provided to the Sopatil Hotel. Um and um. Um. More than twelve months, so last week, Friday. Um four months ago on Friday, council wrote to the treasurer um asking for the state government to provide that support. And to date, um a definitive answer hasn't come back from the state government yet. So we put in another letter. We've been the man under the mayor's signature, put in another letter on Friday to say. You know, time has marched on and um we need to get some some resolution on whether the state will provide that support. So there was two elements of the support. One was five million dollar loan. Um that loan and or a letter of support from the state government is what the developer was seeking to be able to go to the banks and get better terms for. Um to to um secure uh funding for the the development. So um that letter went off saying, current settlement date is the twentieth. Um you've had now over twelve months to give us an answer. The Royal Us, not just, you know, the the letter was asking all the state government to negotiate with the developer. So we stated for. Um at arm's length on that. Um so we understand that there is some movement happening at state government level, but whether that movement. Where that movement takes us, I'm not sure. Um um so um either that support will. Forecoming within the next couple of weeks or it won't. And then um other parties will make a decision about where to from here if that doesn't come to hand. And by that time for him. Sorry, that's talking in riddles, but some of that is beyond our direct line of sight. Um at the end of the day, we're not a party to that transaction. Um so. That's the latest, but I think we'll hear one way or the other of something within the next few weeks. Um soon as we do hear something, positive or negative, depending on French, if one reference, depending on what we hear, we'll work out. How we can potentially communicate that um so that people can um be up to speed with where it is represented. Other questions or comments or issues, concerns? No. Um I just want to link the conversation um and just round back to to one thing that. Things worth just re-touching on. And one of the um future potential development sites is the Westland Soccer Club over. Um we've clearly identified that in our sort of our prospectus document, albeit I'll use that word prospectus pretty lightly. It's just a list of potential development sites. Um with the um possibility of securing soccer. Slash or infrastructure funding slash women's sport infrastructure. Not sure. Um what the final um derivative will look like in terms of what money we might uh end up with. Um that site um um and the future of Westland Soccer is still up in the air. Um prior to us potentially securing extra funding, uh we had started to hit down the pump of looking at. Relocating soccer, certainly junior soccer, and probably Westlands to the Jubilee Park, given that we've got the new change room. And upholding facilities out there. Um I just want to flag that um in some of the recent discussions with the state governments. Um we know that the education department has pulled the trigger on the P C, what's called the P C one one four process for the Whala High School sites. Which includes the two ovens, one over, one soul bush paddock. Um that's going through a process. I'm not sure how soon that will get us to a point where that that. Um those sites will become available for um development purposes in one shape or form or another. Sitting right next to the soul bush paddock is the soccer uh club. As it's, as a matter of good fortune and good opportunity, looking in a positive, through a positive lens. Um at the E P L G A uh forum that I myself attended last week. Um the C E O of Discovery Park was one of the guest speakers. Um at that um at the conference, talking about the types of developments that they're doing right around Australia. Um and specifically what they might want to do on the Air Peninsula. Um. Initially, I thought it may have been unsolicited, um but he talked to his presentation on that night and actually showcased. While the Whala site, and he talked to what Discovery would like to do with the Whala site. And it was. On balance, it was pretty positive and pretty, pretty exciting and turned out as the plan. So um off the back of that, um I have received a phone call from Discovery Park. Wanting to have a a conversation with me now to progress their interest of wanting to unlock and expand their development opportunities. There's two pieces of land in play here. One is the Soul Bush Paddock. It can be subject to the P C one one four process. The other piece of the lands is the Soccer Club site, which is still state going on land. Albeit in the care and control of council. So I'm just, I'm just um bringing some of this conversation, linking some of these conversations together. Not sure when um the conversation will come online, but at some stage in the not too distant future, we'll need to engage with less. Westlands um soccer um to confirm that um their future. Appears to not be in their current site and we'll need to think about where they might go to in future. Um where they might go to in future will now be picked up as part of this conversation around this, the um the soccer facilities. That may potentially um be uh in the pipeline. So. Just wanted to connect those conversations that we had in the past. Um we've not real clarity in terms of next steps, but just to let councillors know that that's um still on our radar and. A conversation that we know we will need to have with um Westlands Soccer at some stage in the future. Um so with that, I will ask one more time if there's any other uh questions or. Concerns, issues that any councillors want to raise.
So there you go.
Yes, man.
Just in closing, uh for those who aren't quite sure, I'm still in Adelaide, having attended an eight hour training course today. For mayors, there were four of us in attendance. And it was primarily based on procedural. Running of meetings, uh me picking up where I need to improve. And I can inform you all that where I'm going to improve is my meeting control procedures, formalities. So look out, guys, there's change a-coming. We're going to do our meetings and according to how they should be run. I think that's a nice note to leave, finish on. Look out, guys.
You're all waiting at the location. Okay, all right. With that, we will close the meeting. Thank you everyone for your contributions tonight. Good discussions. Um many items there for um consideration, obviously not decisions tonight, but um your feedback. Has been captured through the process and um you'll see some of that reflected in the report. That's the back review on the eighteenth of September. Thank you all and good night.
Good night all.